It is 4:00. So I would like to begin, although we don't have the town manager yet. So I'd like to call this meeting, June 4th meeting of the Concord Select Board to order. Remind everybody that the meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast. The first order of business this afternoon is I have two statements that I would like to read. The first, as Concord's Select Board, we have a responsibility to speak out. The recent murders of George Floyd, Tony McDade, Amud Abore, and Breonna Taylor created growing stain on our country's promise of opportunity and justice for all. The repeated death of Black Americans by police officers and vigilantes is a disgrace that must be stopped. We condemn violence, but the nationwide protests and violence that this most recent act of cause should inform us all of the depth of the injustices that minorities in this country have so long endured. We must commit ourselves to work to right these injustices and to combat racism in any form. We have the privilege of accompanies living in a town such as Concord where residents can peacefully protest and our police officers are, as the town manager said, our partners in safety.
Thank you, Mike.
Second statement. Three weeks ago, the parties to the litigation held telephonic conference with the judge to discuss the status of the case. During that call, the parties discussed the closure. The judge recognized that the town might be forced to seek an order requiring defendants to reopen the road pending trial, but urged the parties to first try to work it out. I am pleased to report that the defendants and representatives of the Select Board have agreed to meet to discuss the reopening of the southern portion of the road and to discuss settlement. This will be a private meeting. All of the defendants will attend, and the Select Board voted to designate Ms. Ackerman and myself to represent the Select Board. Councils for all parties will also attend, as will the town manager. The Select Board looks forward to the meeting and hopes it will be productive. The next item on our agenda is the town manager update. Mr. Town Manager?
Hi, good evening, everyone, and thank you for those statements, Mr. Chairman. I also...
Stephen, could I ask you to turn your volume up a little bit?
Oh, is that better?
A little bit.
So I asked, I also put out a statement from my view on the protests and everything. It kind of is from me, but I think you all know it was really from Chief O'Connor and I, and Chief O'Connor also earlier in the week put out a statement condemning what had happened in Minneapolis. And I was present for a very peaceful, appropriately socially-distanced protest and really a rally in many ways on Monument Square in Concord. It really was really inspiring to see people out sharing their, having their voices heard in a way that, like I said, was peaceful and respectful. And I know I was with Chief O'Connor and Lieutenant Monahan, and I think that we all felt, you know, a great sense of not only people really having their voices heard, but also many people expressed their support for law enforcement in Concord. We're very fortunate to have an excellent department. And I will tell you that, and again, I'm not going to speak on behalf of Chief O'Connor, but I will, but I can say that as an organization, we hear, we hear you, we hear those voices, and we know that, you know, there may be changes that we need to make for, as a town organization and as a police department. I know that other managers are having the exact same dialogue, and all I can say is there's been a lot of talk about these types of issues on an ongoing basis for certainly my entire municipal career, and I think there have been some gains, but the issues of the past few weeks have really brought a focal point to this idea that change needs to happen faster, and I think we all agree with that. So I appreciate your statement, Mike, and we feel the same way, and we'll be, this is an ongoing discussion. So a couple of things related to reopening. As I mentioned, we have a reopening task force that's focused on municipal operations. I was a little bit late because we were having a discussion at SMT about, we have a draft of the task forces report, and so now we're going to take what the recommendations they have and then build on some other things at the SMT level that need to be done townwide. I don't have a target date yet. We want to certainly come up with our schedule that we're going to work with going forward as soon as possible so people can start to reorganize their lives and schedules around our kind of new normal. We're taking the approach of measure twice, measure twice, cut once, meaning whatever reopening plan we have, it's the reopening plan that will get us through potentially the end of 2020 when we expect to be largely in the same situation in terms of the presence of COVID-19. Hopefully not, but that's the plan we're, we're expecting that, so the plan needs to work, you know, from day one going forward for, like I said, a number of months. And that's for employees. I think the plans to reopen to the public will follow somewhat shortly thereafter once we get kind of our rhythm as a workforce going. I think we'll be, we'll be better able to support the public in person. So a part of that, a part of reopening, so that's reopening town government. In terms of town, the town businesses and town economy, the governor's released a lot of guides over the last week and a half or so. He has started to push towards Phase Two. Tomorrow, I've invited all the restaurants, licensed restaurateurs, to a Zoom call at 2:00 to kind of get a sense of what their needs are and what, and what they feel they need to, what supports they need to have from the town to be able to offer outdoor dining, which is now allowed under the governor's guidance. Marcia Rasmussen from DPLM has kind of taken the lead in looking at of the rules that are currently in place, what do restaurants need to do and what does the town need to do, you know, just help facilitate this. I mean, there are some pretty big challenges. I'll be candid. I think everyone, it's easy to say, let's just do sidewalk dining, but you can't meet, and I think I talked about this last week, you can't meet certain legal requirements, especially ABA. So, I mean, Marcia's put together a memo kind of outlining, you know, licensing and spatial issues and insurance and things like that that are still a matter of law and aerial photos of every restaurant in town so we can look at, okay, well, what's around each restaurant? You know, how many parking spaces are up front? Do they have private parking where they could put their own outdoor seating? And we want to try and be as consistent and comprehensive as possible in laying out what the options are. So we know it's a big deal, and we are trying to get something in place as soon as possible, and hopefully the governor or hopefully the legislature will enact temporary legislation to allow us to not, to maybe relax some compliance with some of the laws that kind of make it restrictive for outdoor dining. I will tell you that one of the biggest barriers I can see is going to be just that, barriers. If we want to allow people to eat on, you know, have tables and chairs either on the sidewalk or in parking spaces, you need to create physical separations from vehicles and traffic. And right now, there's not a lot of barriers. I don't think the town really owns barriers to do that, and so that's, that's a big thing to figure out that I don't think gets a lot of airplay, but that's just part of the mix of what we're looking to solve to get this going. But we are trying to get, to make that happen. I think everybody, as the weather gets nice, wants to enjoy a nice meal downtown. So that's one thing. We are also, we continue to meet, the Economic Vitality Committee met, I think, I'm sure Susan, you'll give a report on this as well, but we did deliver those 100 masks. We have delivered those to someone on behalf of Concord Together, and hopefully those will get distributed to businesses. You know, again, if businesses have individualized needs, they could certainly contact us to see whatever help we can provide. And, you know, I think the biggest thing is when you look at the guidance, each business really needs to take responsibility for assessing their own individual plans for their own businesses. We can help evaluate those plans for compliance, and we can do a lot of things like that, a lot of, a lot of helping out, but we can't create a plan that works for all businesses, and we can't really go into each and every business and create their plans. So businesses need to be doing that on their own, and if they need help, they can reach out to me, they can reach out to Susan Rask. You know, there's a lot of people we can have that can help them. So again, we're trying to do everything we possibly can with the information that we have and the rules as they presently exist. So a little bit of, maybe call it regular business. I know that some of the things we talked about before COVID-19 seemed so far away, but we did, we've initiated a discussion internally about the fleet electrification process, and we're going to make sure that when we hopefully resume normal operations, we're ready to tackle that and start having, and have a plan together for fleet electrification because I know that's something that was, that is currently on the warrant that was of community interest. Similarly, we are working on Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. There was some invasive species work that has been started. That's a big thing to help make sure that project goes forward. We signed some contracts to keep, I think, Phase 2B. That's a front-end phase of 2B, so that'll keep going, and I think that's great. Bruce Freeman Rail Trail's been an important asset during this time. And then one thing I'll say related to COVID-19, we just had our Emergency Operations Center meeting, and the case data that we're, that we're finding is favorable. And I hesitate to say, I mean, it is very good news. It's very good news when there aren't, you know, when facilities are reporting zero active cases and, and no one has, and no one, no one is in a particular facility infected with COVID-19. That's great news, but I don't want it to be taken as it's over because it's not, and we need to keep wearing masks and social distancing and making sure that we're really mindful where we're out and about. But I did want to share some positive news from a case-level standpoint, and I'm glad that that is, I'm really happy to report that. That is really excellent news. And I think that's just about it for me. Any questions?
Are there any questions, Mr. Town Manager? No, Terry.
I have a comment. You, Stephen, sent out this employee survey just about an hour ago, so I don't know if everybody's had time. I looked at it quickly, but I was really impressed, I guess essay section, I'll call it. Almost every single one of the 180 employees that responded wrote a very enthusiastic comment about how supportive you and Kate and the administration have been to the employees and how supportive and how helpful you've been. So I really was impressed by that.
So Terry, thank you so much for saying that. To those who haven't necessarily seen the survey, it looks like I was fishing for compliments. The question was really, and actually, I took the question from another community survey, and it was really, has town leadership conveyed a shared sense of purpose in, you know, in hearing your concerns? Because I thought it'd be a good opportunity, and I will say, town leadership is certainly the Select Board first and foremost, followed by myself and the administration. And so I think we were all kind of, you know, included in the response that we received there, which was, I agree with you, most very, very favorable. But we wanted to say, are we, are we doing this right? You know, sometimes, you know, I don't know every town employee yet, and so I don't know if the things we're deciding, we're talking about here at SMT, how much of that is filtering out? And so I was really relieved to see that people did feel like they were being heard and that, that they were perceiving that we care as much about their issues as we actually in fact do. And so I don't, I don't want to make it seem like that was just about me or Kate. It was really about the leadership structure, which includes all of you as well. So thank you.
Susan?
I just wanted to add to that, that the other part of the question was about feeling part of, that it was a team approach. And, and there was a lot of enthusiasm about that piece, too. A lot of people said yes to the, you know, leadership and yes to the, they felt like they were part of the team. So I think that's important in terms of your leadership style, Stephen.
I would also echo that, especially in a time when everybody has been so distanced, to me, you know, to achieve that sense is a compliment to your efforts and your entire senior teams' efforts. So, you know, kudos across the board, and thank God for Zoom.
You know, it's funny, it's funny you say that. I just read a, I think I shared it with the board, kind of a summary of the Lexington Representative Town Meeting that they did. You know, Lexington and Concord have the tour as first thing, and so Lexington is really, you know, you know, crowing about how they had the first virtual town meeting ever, as far as they know. But in all sincerity, one of the takeaways that was really, I didn't really think about was turnout. You know, they have 197-member representative town meeting, and they said they got 192, and that was, they said, a record. And so this idea that being separated and virtual, improving participation and turnout is something that now, the legislation that enabled them to do that does not apply to open town meeting, and I want to be clear for folks watching at home, like that's, that's not really legally an option for Concord because we have an open town meeting. So I don't want to, but I think it certainly, it was done, I think, in some extent, to some extent as a beta test. I think they proved it really works, and the turnout thing, like I said, was a great, a great takeaway for, for all of us to learn, and hopefully, maybe someday, we can get to a hybrid model where you can do it both in person and virtually. I know that, I know that the moderator is hoping that something like that evolves, hopefully between now and our own town meeting. But I just, when you talk about being separated, but still maintaining that sense of cohesion, I'm thrilled that the organization feels that way, but I, I'm kind of now seeing maybe the electronic connections are, you know, passable in this time here.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. The next item on our agenda is the addition of bus stops at 58 Monument Square and 20 Lexington Road. I'm not sure who's taking the lead on this. Is it Beth or Marcia? I'm not sure.
I'm not taking the lead on this. I'm sorry.
So I, I, I think Steve Dukren from the engineering department, I think he had a conflict tonight, so I am happy to just...
No, I'm here.
Oh, you're here, Steve? Okay.
Yeah, but Beth is going to, Beth is going to start because it's a request from her.
Just for the record, Stephen, introduce yourself.
I'm Stephen Dukren, the town engineer, but Beth is going to introduce the subject.
Thanks, everybody. So we have, Stephen and his team have done a little bit of work finding out feasibility for these bus parking spots. So going back to the Envision Concord, one thing that was a concern to the Select Board and everybody that participated was how to bring people downtown. And one solution to that, or one observation I made when I first got there was, how can people be welcomed downtown if there's nowhere for them to park a bus? So if a tour bus has leisure time built into their schedule, there is nowhere for them to go. The bus parking spots that were put in behind the visitor center at Kai's Road don't meet the requirement for a large bus to make the turning radius. So I started sort of pursuing what we needed to do, what, what other things were in existence. So there are two locations that we've identified. One is a current spot in front of Wright Tavern, which was being used by the Concord Museum during the time they were under construction. So that is one of your agenda items, and it, the spot is already marked, and will be remarked, and the signage right now indicates it's for use by Wright Tavern. So the idea will be, that will be one bus drop zone. So buses will be able to park there Monday through Friday, 9 to 5, and they will have, I think we established a 15-minute drop-off and pickup zone. The second location is in front of Monument Hall. Right now, there are, the spots are not used every day. I spent a lot of time watching them to see if they were in use, and they seem to be the least-used spots that we have for meter-free parking in the downtown area. It is also a very easy location for a tour bus to pull in and around the rotary, going out Lowell Road one way or the other to get to the rest of their destinations. So it's my recommendation that we make two of those. They'll both be the same, 15-minute drop zones. They are not, they can be used by the public at night for events, for weekends, so they will not impact any events at the church next to Wright Tavern. I have permission from all of the abutters. The church has approved it. Monument Hall staff have approved it. And in addition to that, there's one other part, which was a handicap spot. So there's a handicap spot over by in front of Monument Hall. I believe you have all the documentation that Stephen did with all the drawings. So if you have questions about exactly where I'm talking about, please let me know. So the handicap spot also wasn't getting used very often, and the Colonial Inn had put in a request apparently years ago for an addition, a handicap spot in front of their space because they are not able to easily get handicap patrons in and out if they're dining at the restaurant or using the hotel. So we're a little bit killing two birds with one stone by making the change to the parking spot, where we're moving the handicap spot in front of Monument Hall, making room for the bus drop, and giving the Colonial Inn a much more user-friendly handicap spot in front of their location.
Thank you, Beth. We will deal with these as three separate items, but for discussion purposes, does anybody have any questions about the additional bus stops or the removal and addition of the handicap spots, as Beth has indicated?
I had one question that was to do with, where do the buses, you know, once they've unloaded, where do the buses go?
So most of the time, the buses will go, and they are allowed to idle along Lowell Road by the bike, by the boat ramps. And there's been some other conversations with the Public School District and the Transportation Director, John Arena, about other places that he's identified that buses can safely be outside of town and, and wait for a small amount of time. Lowell Road is ideal, again, because they can make the U-turn. The buses can actually pull over to the shoulder there. It's been, we've identified it's wide enough. They can watch the trails end for food, bathrooms, and that'll get the bus drivers somewhere to go.
And you said idle? That goes against...
Yeah, yeah, no, they can't idle. They can park there, so they can stop, they can get out of, you know, have a drink, go and walk out, lock their buses, so that they can pick their patrons up an hour or two later and giving them time to shop and dine downtown.
How's Eric Terry?
Yes, it looks like a really good plan, and my question is, Beth, whether you or anybody has spoken with the Commission on Disabilities about the moving of the handicap parking space and whether it lines up well with the curb cut?
Stephen sent, I think, a diagram. Stephen, do you want to talk about that? The existing handicap spot actually didn't have access to a curb cut, but the new one will have the curb cut, so it will be fully compliant.
I agree with that.
Great. And has anyone sent it over to the, to Jean or anyone at the Commission? Just because it'd be great to have them, let them know and make sure they don't have any other comments.
We can do that.
Good, thank you. Are there additional questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, then let's proceed with the first item, and that is the addition of the bus stops at 58 Monument Square and 20 Lexington Road.
Well, I know, Mike?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you hear me? I note that the bus stop at 20 Lexington is really not an addition. We're just extending the days, the hours.
Is that correct, Beth?
Yes, it's, there's some faded markings. That's what it was used for before, but it's not been, people don't use it now, like the bus, it's right now being used by regular vehicle traffic.
I have to point out that I looked to our regulations, the bylaw that governs traffic and parking, and that spot is not included. So I don't know if that's been done in the past. I'm just haven't caught up with the housekeeping. So if you want to take action to approve it once again with the new hours, I think that would, that would work for us.
Okay, fine.
Thank you.
So are you ready for a motion?
I am.
Okay. Move to approve the addition of a bus stop at 58 Monument Square and an extension of hours for the bus stop at 20 Lexington Road, both available for drop-off Monday through Friday, 8 to 5 p.m.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Is there further discussion?
I'm sorry, did you say 8 to 5 or 9 to 5?
8 to 5, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Okay, I guess I, I was remembering it wrong. Okay, no problem.
The clerk, please call a roll.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
Thank you. I note that it passes unanimously. The second item is the removal of the handicap parking space at 6062 Monument Square. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the removal of handicap parking at 6062 Monument Square.
Is there a second?
Second.
The clerk, please call a roll.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
I note that it passes unanimously. The next item is the addition of handicap parking at 48 Monument Square. I'm ready for a motion.
Move to approve the addition of handicap parking at 48 Monument Square.
Is there a second? The clerk, please call a roll.
Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
I note that it passes unanimously. Thank you both, Stephen and Beth and Marcia.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next item on our agenda is the authorize the Regional Housing Service Office, IMA, extension. Who is going to speak to that item?
I don't, I can certainly speak to it, Marcia, if you're not, so it's pretty simple that it expires, and we need an extension in no small measure because of the delay in approving annual budgets, including our own. And so this is just an extension to get us through till everybody's approved their budgets.
Is there any discussion of this item?
How long is the extension?
90 days, I believe.
90 days to September.
Yeah, 90 days.
Thank you, Marcia.
And what is the length of the contract? Is it an annual contract or several years?
I can answer that. The contract with the staff is for a three-year time period with an annual increase in their, in their contract amount. The other reason that this was necessary is because various Select Boards were not meeting, and we all, we need you all to sign in and sign on to the intermunicipal agreement.
All right, seeing no further questions, I would entertain a motion.
Move to authorize the town manager to execute the Regional Housing Services Office intermunicipal agreement, extension to September.
Second.
The clerk, please call a roll.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
I note that it passes unanimously. Thank you, Marcia. The next item on our agenda is Letter of Support for Concord's MVP Action Grant Application. Who is going to address this? Mr. Town Manager? Guess who's muted?
Sure, yeah. So, sorry about that. So you have the letter, the letter of support in the packet, and it's pretty straightforward. I do want to commend the work of Kate Hanley in particular, but also a lot of members of the SMT and other town departments. I know Marcia's team was pretty involved as well in developing the municipal vulnerability preparedness plan, and just for the, you know, there's also a climate action plan. And the, and we're writing, and so this grant will help us continue that work. Municipal vulnerability, just to clarify, the climate action is really reducing carbon footprint and reducing greenhouse gases. Municipal vulnerability is resiliency against increased severity of storms as a result of climate change. And so it's more about managing our tree canopy and, you know, stormwater and things like that. So that's, that's where the two kind of areas differ, but, and so we want to keep, keep the work going. It's an excellent project.
Right. Are there any questions for the town manager about this item? Seeing that...
Where, where is this posted?
The, which part?
The grant application?
I don't know if the grant application has been posted, but it would be, it would be on our website. I do think we, I shouldn't say think, we have, we have an MVP page. I think it's probably nested in our sustainability webpage. I haven't personally observed it, but I do think our MVP... personally observed it, but I do think our MVP plan draft has been circulated, maybe posted.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you say, can you say a little about the Water Resource Management Plan? What, why it's different from what we've already done or what we're, what we're planning to do with it?
Unfortunately, I'd have to defer to Alan, and he's not here. But it certainly, if you want him to come back and talk about it, we certainly can.
Well, I'm prepared to vote for it. It's just curious because I thought that we had Water Resource Protection Districts. And so I don't know if this is enclosed or just like to get the information at some point.
And I guess related to that point, one of the reasons I was asking about if we had seen this is, you know, in the past, there's, these have always contained excellent work on behalf of the town, so I'm not questioning that. But it's helpful to know what the impact is going to be in terms of either additional infrastructure needs that are going to translate into budget and so forth. So it would just, I know we may be dealing here with a timeframe as well, so trying to balance those two items.
Are we under a time constraint here, Stephen?
I do think there is a deadline, yeah.
Do you know when it is?
I don't. I know I submitted my letter of support for the grant yesterday, I think. I think she's trying to get it out by the, I think by the end of the week. I think, again, I think, Linda, to Linda and Terry, to your point, I do think that this, you know, we're applying for a grant based on, you know, water resource management. And if we get funded, I do think it's worth, I do think it's a good discussion to have with the board about what the money's going to be used for and what the overall plan's going to be. But I think, I think the grant, usually the awarding of the grant sometimes precedes the full development of the scope of work.
Well, perhaps I could suggest that we could try to move ahead with this item, but that we could purposely ask Mr. Kaskar to come back.
He and Kate Hanley would be the ones who would, and I apologize for not having him here. I kind of looked at the, the letter as kind of a...
That's all right. But let's do, I think there's a lot of questions about, not the grant application so much, but as Sherry and Linda were indicating, that it might be in everybody's interest if we had a chance to explore this a little bit more fully. I'll work with Stephen to figure out a schedule to have Alan join us at a subsequent meeting. That's satisfactory.
Yes.
Yes.
Without additional comments, then I would entertain a motion.
Move to endorse the Letter of Support for Concord's Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Action Grant Application.
Second.
The clerk, please call a roll.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
And I note that it passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is extend the charge of the Capital Planning Task Force until June 30th, 2021. Susan?
Yeah, I just had noted one thing in the charge. It says that under membership, the term of office shall be six months, and that maybe needs to be amended because of this date moving?
Yes, I know. Yes, you're right. We need to change that.
Well, shall we just change it then? Could we, to the term of office, office shall be until June 30th, 2021? That's a satisfactory change.
And I'd just like to comment about why members felt that we needed this long timeframe. At least three of the members are associated with school committee or school administration, and they feel that September is going to be extremely busy with opening schools this year. So we might not even get our public hearing in until October or November. And then another thing after that, we originally thought it would be about eight weeks until, after the public hearing that we could finish the report. But now we're thinking with Zoom and the other questions, rather than keep extending and extending and extending, we just do one extension per year and we'll be done.
All right. First, I would like a motion to entertain the amendment to the charge as submitted, to strike the term of office shall be six months and to replace it with the term of office shall end June 30th, 2021.
If I capture that sentiment in slightly different wording, will that be okay?
Why don't you just say it?
Okay. See if this works. Move to extend the charge of the Capital Planning Task Force and the term of office for committee members until June 30th, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Much more eloquent, eloquently said.
I don't know that, but I tried.
Would you please call the man?
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
And I note that it passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is the fiscal 21112 budget request. Ms. LaFleur?
Good afternoon. I'm back again this weekend now, this week now that town meeting has been continued. Past the end of the current fiscal year, we need to take action to institute a budget for the first couple of months of the upcoming fiscal year to get us to the new town meeting date. As I mentioned to you last week, there is recently enacted legislation that allows us to continue on a, essentially a 1/12 spending basis until town meeting has adopted a new budget. When I was here last week, we went through the actual budget, but I mentioned that we would have to come back because the form that we are required to submit to the Department of Revenue was not yet available, and that did come out earlier this week. Just, just a quick review in case anybody wasn't here last week to hear this. We are essentially able to, to adopt 1/12 of our current year spending, but we are able to add in additional expenditures that we pay in the first several months of the, of the year. So for instance, we have insurance premiums and we have debt service that we need to pay that may be over and above our current one-month spending level. So we've put together a plan, taking into account any of the required additional spending above the 1/12 amount, and put that in the format that is required by the Department of Revenue to be submitted for approval. Just a reminder, we did not include any capital items. We haven't included any salary increases unless we are already contractually bound to those. And we haven't included any additional spending, any new spending, such as money for the affordable housing, which is one of the warrant articles on, for approval at town meeting. We are only able to submit one month at a time. We're presenting July, August, and September to you. We don't expect there to be any changes, and we're hoping that you will approve them as a package so that we are able to submit as soon as possible each month to get the department to sign off on our spending. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Before I ask the board, have there been any changes in the numbers that sent you, that you reported to us at our last meeting?
So at, last week, I mentioned I was still waiting confirmation from CPS. And CPS, after the meeting, did say that 1/12 of their fiscal 20 appropriation was perfectly acceptable for the first three months. So those, those numbers had reflected 1/12 of fiscal 21. They've been revised to 1/12 of fiscal 20.
Thank you. Are there any questions for our Chief Financial Officer? All right. I asked Terry, Carrie earlier in the day if she could provide an appropriate motion that would not only encapsulate the numbers that she has shown us last time and were included in the package this week, but also the notion that she made that rather than having to come back to us month over month, that the motion would authorize the Town Manager to submit on a monthly basis memorandum to Department of Revenue consistent with the numbers that we have seen for these first three months. So that will be reflected in the motion. Are there any questions? Seeing none, then, Linda, I'm ready for a motion.
Okay. Move to approve the FY 21 1/12 budgets for the months of July, August, and September, as presented and authorized by the Town Manager to submit, and authorized the Town Manager to submit the approved budget on a monthly basis to the Bureau of Local Accounts Director for final approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. The clerk, please call a roll.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
Thank you. I note it passes unanimously. Thank you, Carrie, very much, and Stephen, for getting this material put together. And we look forward to hearing positively back from the Department of Revenue that we can go ahead with this plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is Town Meeting Declaration and Update. Madam Town Moderator?
Good afternoon, everybody. As Carrie mentioned, I have indeed issued a third declaration of recess and continuance of 2020 Annual Town Meeting. The new date is Wednesday, July 29th, again at 5 p.m. in order to enable us to take advantage of daylight hours should we end up having the meeting on that date and needing to have the meeting outdoors. I note that we're still in Phase 1 of the reopening plan by the Governor, and we don't get to medium-sized theaters, auditoriums, and other meeting venues and performance venues until Phase 3, and we don't get to large venues until Phase 4. That's some amount of information. And the Governor noted in his public remarks today that Massachusetts has been particularly hard-hit by the virus, that we have the third-highest per capita incidence of the virus of any among all states in the country. So the trend is in the correct direction now, but we're no means, by no means out of the woods. I can tell you that at the end of May, just barely a week ago, the town of Blackstone did hold a very abbreviated Annual Town Meeting outdoors in a parking lot. And it went successfully. They did need to strip their meeting down to deal with only essential articles and put over anything that could be put over to a special town meeting to be held sometime later, the fall or even later than that. So we'll wait another week or two, and that's a wonderful experiment for us to see whether the social distancing and facial covering precautions and hand washing that they very scrupulously observed in the Blackstone meeting were successful, and they don't have any increased incidence of cases of the virus in their community. That would be good news for us. It would give us a little more confidence in our ability to hold a meeting outdoors and to be able to do so safely. We do still have the safer-at-home advisory in place for folks over 65. I haven't heard any kind of noises, Stephen, perhaps you have, about when that might change from the Department of Public Health, State Department of Public Health perspective or the Governor's perspective, but we're still working with that. And I, I looked up our numbers, and we have about, about 20% of our population, according to the Census Bureau, is people over 65 in Concord. And that translates to roughly a quarter of our voters. So this impacts, that stay-at-home advisory impacts a huge segment of the voting population here in town. And I think we need to take that particularly seriously, and it's, not every town is the same in terms of what their voting demographics are, what the incidence of the virus is, what the issues confronting them at town meeting. So again, we're in a position where we tend to delay our meeting, and we've got good reason to do so. And it would be my plan to continue to do so so long as both those things are true, that we opt to from a public health perspective and that we're able to from a fiscal and town operations standpoint. I'm happy to answer any questions. I heard also about the virtual town meeting in Lexington, which apparently went very, very well. And again, that is a thing that is possible for a representative town meeting. At least it will be once some legislation gets enacted. I understand that Lexington thinks that there is a retroactive provision in that legislation. So even though it hasn't yet been enacted, they're okay. And their Plan B, if the legislation doesn't get enacted, is they have a court action in process to declare the validity of their town meeting conducted on this basis. So they needed to do it. They figured out a way to do it securely. They're in the happy position of having a software developer on their Board of Selectment who created an entire web application to enable them to participate with secure identities logging in. So some special circumstances there, which sadly will not be available to us. However, there are a lot of other things that when we get there, we can take advantage of, things like what they did in Lexington is they YouTubeed, they recorded on YouTube all of the presentations on every article so that people were able to watch those in advance. They could even submit questions in advance. And a lot of the information that you take time at town meeting to discuss and circulate could happen in advance virtually, thus enabling us to further shorten the meeting. So those things are possible for us and are possible in an open town meeting. If we do get to a point where we want to have a town meeting and we know we want to do it outdoors, I'll be asking the Select Board to think about doing it perhaps on a Saturday and scheduling it for a morning hour so that we can have the bulk of a day to do the meeting, and we'd have a rain date. That is what Blackstone did. They convened their meeting early in the day on a Saturday rather than doing it at the traditional evening hour.
Thank you, Carmen. I would just note that in making your decision, that you consulted with a number of officials in town.
That is correct. We have in place a protocol, which I did follow, and I did have a consultation with Mike and Stephen and also with our Police and Fire Chief and our Director of Public Health and our Director of Public Works, all of whom were in accord that this is still the right thing for us to be doing.
drain?
Just two quick, two quick, one question, one comment. I think that when you read your declaration, you said July 29th, and I think we're talking about June 29th, correct?
No, it's now July 29th.
Oh, I guess I have something in front of me that is outdated or is no longer the declaration. Then that's my mistake.
Last declaration, Jane, pushed the date to June 29th, and the one that I just issued today pushes the date to July 29th.
I see. Yep, that makes sense. Thank you. And the, the other question, it was just a question, is how big is the Blackstone Town Meeting? I'm curious as to how, you know, what was the size that they were able to host a, a... the size that they were able to host a outside annual town meeting?
I can get the precise number for you. My memory is that it was a couple hundred people, so smaller than ours, but doable. And, you know, the hardest part is moving people in and out and maintaining the social distance while people are ingressing and egressing. They were able to have people approach microphones. They had wipes and sprays to clean the microphones. Our Director of Public Health has indicated that she thinks that would be an appropriate way to handle that issue. People wore masks and spoke to masks. There's a very active debate about the extent to which folks can be required to wear masks at a town meeting. And if they don't wish to wear masks, they probably can't be excluded if they're registered voters, but it's reasonable to encourage them to sit in a section with other unmasked people, so that those people wearing masks will not be made to feel uncomfortable. So, and that is, in fact, the state public health guidance, the State Department of Public Health guidance for religious gatherings right now, that anyone who has a medical reason not to wear a mask, or simply doesn't wish to, should either be excluded from the service or asked to sit in a separate location.
Carmen, I would, I'd really like to thank you for staying so up to speed on this and filling us in. And I'm especially intrigued by some of the ideas that the other towns are trying out, and that we can learn from them, especially what you talked about, about the presentations being on YouTube, and all of that kind of stuff being done before the town meeting. That sounds like it would help no matter, even before COVID-19, that would have been great. So, we have a few silver linings with COVID-19, the things that we're learning to do better. So, thanks for keeping up to speed and letting us know.
Thanks.
Carmen, in your very first memorandum, where you were outlining potential steps that you thought would be needed, would be helpful to take if we were going to have some kind of a restricted town meeting, you, I think, suggested that the Select Board, you would propose an amendment at the beginning of town meeting that would essentially table indefinitely those items that the Select Board and the Finance Committee together viewed that could be put off. I'm wondering if your encouragement is that we should begin that process?
Yes, I think that that would be a very worthwhile endeavor, you know, for, even in September, I don't think, and even outside, I don't think we want to be spending three days outside together or two days outside together. I think we want to limit the length. I mean, we know that the risk of contracting the virus is a simple formula, which is the amount of exposure to the virus times the length of time that you're exposed to it. So, if we can reduce the time and reduce the exposure by having it outside, having people socially distanced, and having people wear masks, we can probably do it safely, but it's not without risk. I don't think we can eliminate the risk. But we want to have it be comfortable enough that people will come and not feel that they have to choose between exercising their right to come to town meeting or protecting their health. And at the same time, we want the meeting to not be so overburdened with protective measures that it doesn't feel anything like town meeting. But a huge help would be to shorten the agenda for the meeting. And I would certainly have a conversation with our citizen petitioners, and I'm happy to do that, to ask them whether they would be willing to put over their petitions to a special town meeting to be held later in the year. And I think the Planning Department would need to choose which of their zoning proposals they wish to put forward now and which could wait until a special town meeting later. And the same decision has to be made with respect to budget and capital items by the town and the various school, judiciary units.
So, I'm going to make a suggestion, and I'd like reactions from anybody who cares to react. So, I'm going to suggest that for the Finance Committee and the Select Board to, in a meeting without having done some prior work, with five of us and 15 of them to productively do that, I think is asking a lot. So, what I'm going to suggest is, with the Board's approval, Carmen, I would appreciate it if you could reach out to the petitioners with that request. I will, if the Board approves this, I will reach out to the various town departments in the town, seeking their input on which of the articles that are planned to come before us they view as essential. Once we get that input, then I would suggest that the clerk and I meet first with the Chair and the Vice Chair of the Finance Committee to see if we can, with just the four of us, at least agree on a subset of those that we would deem essential. And then, once we have made as much progress as we can, then we could convene a joint meeting of the Finance Committee and the Select Board to see if we could deal with the remainder of these items, and perhaps look less to try to deal with. Does that seem, from the Board, does that seem like a reasonable approach to this? Jane, I saw you shake your head. Any other comments?
Is anyone else thinking about the, one of the interim steps in terms of the number of people who would be meeting together?
Well, I would just suggest that you and I meet with the Chair and Vice Chair of the Finance Committee, sort of informally, so that we're not violating open meeting law, and just see if we can together categorize these as, I'm sure everybody's going to think these are essential, I'm sure everybody's going to think these can be postponed, and here are the seven, I don't know what number, gray area warrant articles that we need to have a fuller conversation about. And then we can convene a joint meeting of both of the committees in open session to talk about that and to discuss those gray area, if you will, articles. Susan, I saw your hand.
Yeah, I think that sounds like a reasonable approach.
Stephen?
Yeah, Mike, I'm happy to facilitate that conversation for kind of town, Big T-town generated articles, and let you know, I mean, some of them, obviously, most of the stuff that we do is either capital or financial, and we are, we are going to look at the capital plan in, once we get a better sense of the state budget numbers and revenues and to see the impact.
If I'm remembering correctly, the things that we call enterprise funds, except for the BD Center, I think, are able to continue their operation without the town meeting authorization. Is that correct?
Yeah, the town meeting approves the appropriation of, or the issuance of borrowing for capital projects for enterprise funds, but in terms of the revenue, it's based on fees like electrical utility fees or water and sewer utility fees, so they don't really require a town meeting appropriation, so they can continue on as they actually, Carrie's memo on the budget lays that out. But in terms of like other capital or other policy-related items, we'll talk, we'll certainly talk at the department level with you about what's essential versus non. And I think, like I said, some of that's going to be driven by what's the financial impact.
Good. Carmen?
One other thing I wanted to note is that the meeting can also be shortened by a robust use of the consent calendar. And one of the things that Lexington did was, with the agreement of their Select Board and their Finance Committee, they had 27 articles, including budget and capital articles and zoning changes and so forth on the consent calendar, which they were able to do very effectively and very quickly. So, we're comfortable and used to a consent calendar in Concord, and we can be, if there is agreement between the Finance Committee and the Select Board on placing perhaps some more unusual things on the consent calendar, like the town's budget, for example, if there is a consensus of the Board and the Committee to do that, then I think that that would be a possible thing for us to do and worth your having a conversation about, I think.
Let me make another suggestion then, before I turn to Terry. The consent calendar is your decision. So, perhaps you could help us out, since you've been at all of the public hearings, if you could provide a draft of those articles that at the current time you're considering to be on the consent agenda. And then, when the Finance Committee and Select Board get together, we could think of other items that might be able to be added to that. Would that be all right?
I can do that.
Terry, did you have a question?
Yes, I have a comment and a question. My comment is, this process sounds really good, and I don't think that we're going to have a lot of gray areas. I have a feeling that there might be a lot of agreement. And very few articles are, you know, that we're going to, are going to be controversial as to whether they're essential or not. That's just my gut feeling. And my question is, I'm glad all of you are going to be, who is going to reach out to the schools? Is that part of what you're volunteering, Stephen? Because we have, you know, several school articles, and we want to include them in this discussion.
Yeah, I'm happy to engage the superintendent.
Right.
In that dialogue, sure.
Okay. All right. So, is there any other comment? So, I guess I'll try to summarize. Stephen, we'll reach out to the various town departments and to the schools to ask them to define for us the, what articles they believe are critical, what articles they believe could be postponed. Carmen, you will, on our behalf, reach out to the petitioners, and you will also provide us with a draft of your suggested consent calendar. And I will reach out to Chairman Banfield and ask him to meet with me and Linda and his Vice Chair, I don't know when, but as soon as I get.
That's Mary Hartman, I think.
Yes, I know. When I, when I get the input from Carmen and Steve, and then I will reach out to the various committees that have articles before us. And when we get that assembled, then we'll have that meeting. And then, following that meeting, we'll convene an open-session meeting of the Select Board and the Finance Committee. Do I seem to get it right? All right. Thank you.
May I, may I make one other mention of a related topic? I just want to make note of the request that I received from several Concord voters to recuse myself from presiding over Article 9 on the 2020 annual town meeting warrant, whenever we get to annual town meeting. I think you've all received a copy of that, and I have undertaken to consult with the State Ethics Commission, and I have a call into them, and will abide by whatever their advice is.
All right, thank you. Yes, I know, we all did receive that. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Moderator. I greatly appreciate you coming and sharing your declaration update with us.
Thank you.
The next item follows from that, because with her declaration, it's our obligation to report to Public Safety Officers and notify the Attorney General regarding the postponement of the annual town meeting. We've done this once before. The Public Safety Officer that we are going to appoint is Susan Rask, the Public Health Director. So, is there any comment or question about this article? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Move to appoint the Health Director, Susan Rask, to notify the Attorney General regarding the postponement of the annual town meeting.
Is there a second?
Aye.
Would the clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Notchus?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
I note that it passes unanimously. Thank you all. Next item on our agenda is the Town Manager Evaluation, a long overdue, as you might recall, as part of the contract when we brought Stephen on board, was the notion of a six-month evaluation. We started that process, and then ran into this pandemic. It's finally been completed. I did share a draft of it with Stephen, asking him if there were any factual matters that needed to be corrected. And I then shared it with all of you and got independent input from each of you, without sharing it with all of you, and produced a final draft of that, which was in your packet. So, first, are there any comments or questions about that? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to accept this Town Manager Evaluation and transmit it to the Town Manager.
To accept the six-month Town Manager Evaluation completed and transmit to the Town Manager?
Thank you. And I would note that the ending part of that evaluation indicated that it was a short process and interrupted by a couple of unfortunate events that kind of took away a lot of people's time. And I think we all look forward to a more substantial evaluation at the first anniversary. And we have already, I think, on numerous occasions made observations about how grateful we are for the leadership the Town Manager has been provided during this pandemic, of working very hard to keep us safe. So, yes, Mr. Town Manager.
So, I just feel like, just compelled to make a quick comment about it, and just to say thank you, honestly, to the Board for the feedback. And as you know, it was a 360-year evaluation, so it did include feedback from the senior management team. And I want to thank them for their feedback as well. It certainly has been a different start, to say the least, and the support that I've received from the Board and from SMT has really helped me manage all of it. It hasn't gone perfectly, and some of the stuff that hasn't gone very well are really direct results of, you know, me as an individual, you know, style, you know, when you follow someone who's been here for a long time, there's certainly style changes. I've tried to modify my style. I've tried, you know, if anything, I probably tried a little too hard to fit in, which you want to do when you're trying to go through a team-building process. I've learned, I think, from the feedback that I've received, and I've tried to make adjustments, but I know more are needed, and I'm going to continue to try and do better each day. And like I said, I am very grateful for the feedback.
Thank you. All right. Next item on our agenda is Committee Liaison Report.
Did we vote on that?
Yes. Sorry, thank you, Susan. Will the clerk please call a roll?
I just wanted to ask a question, actually. Mike, it says in one place, I can't remember where, something about the Select Board will provide the manager with a list of suggestions. And I was just wondering if we're planning to do that or some kind of goal set?
Yes, I am. As part of the, as part of the 360 feedback that Stephen alluded to, there were a couple, I don't know if they're open-ended questions, but there were questions that didn't fit nicely into the questions that the Select Board was asked to do. And one of those questions which we're talking about is, what is one thing you'd like to see this Town Manager start doing? So, I thought I would just provide Stephen with a list of those things for him, but it's really not an evaluative set of comments, so I didn't believe it belonged in the Town Manager Evaluation. All right?
Aye.
All right. If no further comments, Ms. Escobedo.
Okay. Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Notchus?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
Thank you all. I note it passes unanimously. Let me say as a follow-up that one of the things that the Select Board will want Let me say as a follow-up that one of the things that the select board will want to engage with the town manager coming up, I don't know when exactly we'll do that, because we don't want to get it in the way of dealing with this pandemic. But starting to talk about, now that you have been here for some period of time anyway, to begin to articulate the goals you have as town manager for the town. Uh, and I think, you know, if we hadn't had the pandemic and the, and the data breach, we'd be a little bit ahead of that. But I think that's something the board, uh, every year, as you know, lays out its goals and an expectation is after some period of adjustment, we would expect the same from the town manager or so. And at some time upcoming here, when things get a little bit back to normal, we'd hope to engage you in that kind of conversation. All right, next, now that we, I'd finally got a vote, uh, committee liaison reports. Jane, you're in my upper left-hand corner, so I'll start with you, if that's okay?
Uh, I'm a quick start because I have no liaison reports to, to give. I either uh was not able to attend, actually, most of my committees didn't meet, and those that did had abbreviated uh ends.
Okay, fine, Susan?
Um, I actually also had no meetings. I reported, I think, last week on the economic vitality, because it was right before, the day before our meeting. But I did attend, um, uh, tune in on the Concord Business Partnership. And um, Jen Shuneman, the co-chair of the Economic Vitality Committee, but also someone who's instrumental in the Concord together, verified that there is indeed um a special fund uh through uh the community chest that will benefit small businesses and anyone could, can make a tax deductible contribution. I'm not sure exactly what the criteria are for awarding the money. I'd wait to hear that, but that's it for me.
Right, and at the same meeting, I think there were uh reports from Lexington, Hudson, and I've forgotten the third town, uh, about things that they were doing. I guess that was very interesting. I think there was a grant that had been applied for, for, I think it was the amount of $300,000 to aid, but these were micro businesses, as businesses with five or fewer employees. So not exactly clear who will fall into that category here in town, but that would be good. Terry?
I do have a short report. I had a few meetings get canceled and rescheduled, but I did attend remotely by Zoom the premiere of uh the film called Making of Joe Wheeler: A Concord Story. And this is one of the series that the library is doing that documents experiences of Concord residents and demonstrates personal acts of courage. So I found it very interesting, both as international service in Pakistan and um, I forgot what other country, Jordan, I think. But also looking at the scenes of Concord. He was born in 1926, lived on a farm most of his life, and the scenes of Concord, of the farms and the mill dam through the twenties, thirties, and forties, it, it was really interesting.
Thank you. Linda? Oh, Susan, sorry. You're muted.
I know. I'm sorry, I just have one other thing. And that was just a general uh comment about encouraging people to watch the candidates forums, both for select board and for school committee, that the league has done, and you can find them on the league site, and they're very informative.
Thank you. Uh, Linda?
Um, I attended the um meeting of the Nuclear Metal Starment Reuse Planning Committee, and they um are moving forward um have, now that the final um EPA preliminary reuse report has been finalized, and I think the town manager mentioned that a couple of weeks ago, um, they're now deciding the next steps that need to be taken. They, they are required, first of all, I should say, for a public meeting, which obviously got interrupted uh with the last few months. So they're now uh re-engaging on that issue and preparing to um format how that public uh input will be obtained. There are, so where we're left at this point is that there are three uh preliminary plans or options for reuse that have been outlined. And um, the remedi- remediation at the site um continues, but they need to be informed um for, by public input on this preliminary report. So that will take the form, I think, of reaching out to committees, other committees by the reuse committee, perhaps a survey, and they're still um exploring other avenues to do that. Um, I, just as I mentioned, I did, um, this period of time has allowed me to catch a couple of the conservation coffees, which I don't normally have the chance to do necessarily during the year. It, it, and it's um, it clearly fills a real need in town in terms of the people who participate in, in that. And that was exemplified when they talked about not meeting in July and August, and there were audible ahs by everybody in the group. Right now, um, volunteers are being encouraged um to pull mustard and um just not roots, uh, if they have the opportunity to do so. Some people are continuing to do that, even though there wasn't a formal volunteer organized this year. Um, I attended CPC uh the other night. This is their initial meeting to reset, uh, having taken hiatus over the last couple of months, not being considered an essential meeting. Not unlike probably some of the other committees, but particularly for them, they're being challenged right now by not having a definite date for town meeting set for 2021, even though we are still dealing with um our, our, our current town meeting challenge here. And, and I just mention that only because uh they are required in terms of application dates, to set application dates, information sessions, and so forth um for this next fiscal year. So they um, they understand that that information is not available at this point, and they gave a stab, at least putting together a tentative calendar, so that those people who want to apply, and they're assuming that there'll be a high demand from town departments this year, uh, as there always are, but particularly given the budget situation, will be able to uh know what's coming down in terms of the expected dates. So they gave their first stab at that, and we'll see how that plays out. I also had a CHA meeting this morning, um, and where um Stephen was engaged in a conversation with them about the point at which they now need a letter of support for their HUDRE positioning, for their federal properties. And um, that, for those of us who have been involved in that process and watching that for over a year, they've really come a long way despite everything else that's been going on. And they are right now looking for a search consultant um who will be, who has specific knowledge of housing authorities in addition to affordable housing. But I think it's very important, uh, specific knowledge for housing authorities um to conduct a search for their ED. Uh, this is not an easy task. So if anyone has any leads on this, Marianne Nelson, the executive director over there, would appreciate hearing from you. And that's all I have, have to report. I already mentioned, I should mention again, that the um NRC um meeting was canceled last night because there were so many complications um getting on. And um, some, some of the complications are not always explainable.
Thank you. A couple of quick things. I too attended a conservation coffee, that's always a very productive and informative meeting. I would remind everybody to vote. Susan reminded people to listen to the candidates forum, but I remind everybody to vote next week. And to remind everybody that we have consolidated the voting uh to be at the high school this year as opposed to the various places our various wards meet. So please make note of that. Also, the select board has been meeting at 4 o'clock on Thursdays for the last few weeks. We're going to shift our meetings from Thursdays back to our traditional Monday meeting time. That will still continue to be for the time being at 4:00 in the afternoon. And so the next planned meeting of the select board will be June 15th. So we continue to receive miscellaneous correspondence. This, this past week, the correspondence has been dominated by uh requests that the police uh use body cams and engage in de-escalating training. And I forwarded those uh to the chief of police. And we received probably a half, at least I've received probably about a half dozen of those, I don't know if you did. So I have no additional correspondence. I would open it, are there public comments? I don't see anybody unmuting themselves. I'll wait another moment. Seeing no public comments, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move?
For a second. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Notchus?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye?
Thank you. I note that it passes unanimously. Thank you all for coming, and please stay well.
Good night.
Thank you, you too.
Bye, doll.
My folks.